Okay, we'll call the meeting order. Joe Toth will lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome all of you tonight to the July 13th Board Meeting. Tonight, all trustees are present. And without objection, tonight, we will review, revise, and approve the agenda. Are there any revisions to the agenda? Okay, and without objection, we will approve the minutes of the June 8th Board Meeting. All right, we will move on then to visitors and correspondence. Correspondence is in your packet and is self-explanatory. Then, under public comment, tonight, our first person is Brian Lowfink. Would you like to come forward?
On behalf of the Office of International Programs in the University of Montana, I would like to thank the Board for this gracious welcome. I would like to explain the visitors, which I'm sure some of you may be wondering about. I'm very pleased to introduce a group of highly distinguished educators from Pakistan. They're here for three-month participation in a teacher professional development training program funded through the U.S. Agency for International Development. Thank you very much for coming to my guest, and thank you for our hosts for allowing us to come to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to you all. Let's see, our next person on the agenda is Dave Severson. Now, he's not here tonight, but I think you're Dave tonight.
I'm Dave.
Okay.
I'm Carla Getz, and I'm the Vice President of our Teachers Association. And the only thing I really wanted to say for Dave, and Dave is in Washington, D.C. right now with his family, attending an AFT conference. Speaking on behalf of the teachers, we would really like to see the middle school athletics not outsourced. We really feel that just those connections that teachers can make with kids during this time of athletics is really important.
Thank you. And, you know, I forgot to mention that this public comment period, and Carla, this is okay, but this is for items that are not on the agenda here. And so, you'll have that chance to say that again if you feel like it later. But, okay, Mary, are you Doug? Okay, all right. Come ahead.
I'm Mary Hall, and I'm representing IDEA PTA. IDEA PTA is the Missoula area advocacy group for students with disabilities. As a PTA, we are involved with schools on the local and the state levels. I think one of our most important functions is to lend financial support to district personnel who wish to attend workshops and conferences. Continuing education is critical to increase their knowledge and effectiveness as teachers of diverse learners. As the district budget has become tighter, we've seen an increase in the number of requests for funding for people to go to continuing education. Through our Fine IDEA Awards, we recognize exceptional work by professionals who work with and support individuals with disabilities. We encourage everyone to participate in recognizing excellence. Anyone can nominate someone for a Fine IDEA Award, and if it's all right, I'll put some nominating forms on the back table. Tonight, we are honoring two teachers from Hawthorne School, Jana Monzer and Robert Rizley. I've never had a child in either of their classrooms, but if I did, I would consider myself fortunate to have my child educated by either of these dedicated teachers. As it is, I feel fortunate to know two such caring, creative, and funny people. Steve McQ, the principal at Hawthorne School, will now say a few words and present the awards.
Thank you, Mary.
Well, it is my honor to honor these two fine teachers. They are just incredible. I mean, they really seem to be always positive with their students, they always care about their students, they take their students and they consider themselves their students number one, but also, as like Mary was saying, they are pretty funny, they're pretty good. They keep the school pretty high up in high morale and that, so they really do help. Hang around them for a while, and you'll understand that they're pretty fun. So, it's, they're great teachers, they're great staff members, they're great people to have around your school, and I just love to have them, and I really, really do appreciate what they do for our school, for our students in particular, and also our school districts. So, I just think your two are great. So, Robert, thank you, you're a great one. Robert Rizley, and then Jana Monzer. Jana.
Congratulations to your vote. Next item is item from the audience. We have Kelly Ryan on the agenda. Kelly?
I don't know if this is the right time or not. My name's Kelly, I'm from the YMCA, and I was just, wanted it to be known, somebody told me I should call and get on to make sure that everybody knew that there was somebody from the YIP having any questions.
Okay, you'll have an opportunity to speak when we get to that part.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further items from the audience that are not pertaining to tonight's agenda? Okay, how about items from trustees?
I just wanted to say best wishes to Jane Ryder from the Missoulian, who is on maternity leave. And over the course of the last year, with all that's happened on the school board, I guess I would just like to say how much I appreciate the freedom of the press that we have in this country, and the dedication especially of newspaper journalists for the in-depth analysis and coverage, and the many, many hours of sitting and listening to our meetings. And I just would like to say that I'm going to miss Jane while she's on maternity leave. I am so impressed with her professionalism and even-handed fairness in reporting, and I believe the whole Missoula community is fortunate to get the information as reported. So, I wish her the best as she becomes a new mom, and I hope she journals while she's on maternity leave and will return soon to covering the school board.
Further items from trustees? Okay, moving ahead to reports, your health insurance trust fund report is in your packet. Our next item is the Montana School Board Association Director Report, and Diane?
Thank you, Rosemary. I just quickly report a couple of things that happened in Helena. MTSBA, the Montana School Boards Association, is considering a due restructure. That's one issue that they're looking at. Also, they've outgrown their space in Helena, providing all the services that they provide to school districts around the state, and so they're looking at potentially purchasing or leasing a new building. Also considering a distance learning program, a curriculum that would be created in the state of Montana, provided to school districts in the state in a partnership with MREA. And apparently, there's an organization from Alaska that has approached many school districts in the state about a distance learning program, and MTSBA is looking at being rather proactive as opposed to reactive. So, those were the highlights. I provided Dr. Clark with all of the information and handouts, and that's it. Concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Our next item is, three of us attended the Montana School Board Association Board Chair and Leadership Workshop, and Naomi Kimball was volunteered to make the report.
Yeah, we'd be pleased to know that I actually forgot that I volunteered to do this until 30 seconds ago. So, I'm going to invite Rosemary and Jim to fill in any holes that I leave out. But, we had the opportunity to go to this training provided by MTSBA and met school board leaders from all across the state, which is actually very interesting, and found out Missoula is not the only school board, certainly your school district, that has its challenges before it. But, we learned a lot about open meeting law, and, you know, it's, seems to be kind of an evolving process, but it's good to know that MTSBA is there to help advise school boards into doing the best they can to not only comply, but really meet the spirit of the law as well. And it was really great to know that they're, there is a resource. And I had never been to a training, an MTSBA training for leadership yet, so it was really nice to get to know the faces in the newsletter, and that was really helpful. They also talked about a different style of deliberation and decision-making that certain boards are using across the state, and it's called knowledge-based decision-making. And I understand that they have this information available online, and it's something that we as a board will talk about later, but just briefly, it was interesting how they broke down a decision-making process into asking board members to sort of analyze their positions based on whether or not it's a belief or a value coming from an emotional position, or coming from purely a factual position. And it talked about the value and being able to bring up all of those points in board deliberation, and how it actually provides a space for individual board members to be fully heard on all of the issues. But, while you might think it takes more time, it actually ends up taking us less time to get to a thought, a well-thought-out decision. So, I'm excited that we may have the opportunity to learn more about that. Those were the two things that struck me the most, and it was just really good to get down, get to know other school board leaders from across the state. So, if there are other opportunities to do it, I hope that we can get together again. And then, I'm going to leave it to Rosemary and Jim to fill in the gaps, because I apologize for not being well-prepared.
Jim, do you have anything to add?
Just one thing, the knowledge-based decision-making was a very interesting concept. It's basically basing decisions on facts, you're supposed to be looking at facts, which is, which, and the formulas, how they're going to do it, they're going to give to us, so, in a form that we can present at the, at the Board retreat, and hopefully, we can all kind of adopt this as a, as a way to reach decisions. And it's, it looked really quite interesting, and something that looks like could be accomplished.
And I would just add that it was really fun for the three of us, I thought, to go together, get to know each other a lot better. Naomi and Jim are really doing a yeoman's task this year as the, as the vice chairs. They are really being called on to do a lot of work, and so, I appreciate all the time that they're putting into this task, and we should all really give them a lot of support. So, thank you guys for that. Your committee reports are in your packet and also available on the website and at the Sixth Street Building. And our next item on the agenda is instruction. Mrs. Wilson?
As I indicated last month, teachers are very, very busy through the summer. We've already had several different committees come and do some work, developing further materials for implementation in the math curriculum and also in the social studies curriculum. We've also had several teachers that are part of training at the university, either through formal classes or workshops that are being offered there, and people are gearing up for the next adoption cycle. The social studies work in the curriculum part is complete, and plans now for implementation and professional development for teachers are underway. Also, at the K-5 level, we delayed the implementation of the new materials until this fall, so that we had an extra year to implement the new communication arts approach, which we knew was going to be pretty time-intensive. So, K-5 teachers this year will be implementing two new curriculum areas, both social studies and math. Next year is the unusual year in the curriculum cycle, where we actually have two core curriculum areas that have to be developed at the same time. As you know, we have a six-year window to develop all of our curriculum, once every six years, the committee, that it's reviewed, new materials are selected, and that whole process. And next year, in order to get it all done, and all the different ones that want, there's one year where we have to double up, and next year is that year, so we'll be working on both science and also health enhancement. Thank you.
Thank you. Under finance, let's see, items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I are all on the consent agenda, which brings us to item J, which is the discussion about the middle school athletic proposal. And we need a motion on the floor, either to adopt the recommendation to outsource the athletic program, or a recommendation to in-source it, or in-house it, or whatever you call it. Yeah, keep it. Is there a motion? Scott?
I'd like to make a motion to keep the middle school athletic program in-house.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Joe. Is there a discussion? Toni?
Well, after a great deal of thought since our last FNO committee meeting, where I expressed extreme concern about the workload that keeping this program in-house would place on our school administrators, I thought further. I mean, that still is a concern of mine. In addition to that, I have, I have some concern about the pace at which we are moving to this decision if we look to outsource, and the fact that there are agencies in the community who have expressed some interest to members of the administration, or perhaps to board members, but have not had the time or the opportunity to put forth a preliminary proposal for us to discuss, and would not have time to respond to an RFP and get something on board before the school year starts. So, given that additional concern, I found myself wrestling with the recommendation to outsource even further. And then, at the FNO committee meeting, I had stated that my primary concerns are that we have a high-quality program and that we involve as many students as possible. And of course, we would all love to see our teachers as all the coaches across the district, and one of the reasons we're looking to outsource is that that is not happening to the great degree that it has been in the past. But, I also thought that if there's an opportunity for, for us to somehow be able to fund a retirement incentive next year, and we did have some teachers who are, you know, facing retirement age, who chose to act on that, that that might bring us an influx of new teachers, and typically, new teachers have more energy for coaching. So, we're kind of at a crossroads right here. And so, with all of those thoughts together and time to kind of mull those over, I'm thinking that, that I would like to see us take one more year to make sure that we have everybody in the community who is interested in participating in this, if we outsource the program, have a chance to let us know that they're interested, and put together a full proposal, so that we're fully informed in making this decision. And also, to give us a chance to see if, in fact, we do have retirements, and we do bring in new teachers, and we do have enough people to coach, that it would make us, make it worth our while to keep the program in district. And all that being said, if we, if we do keep it in-house, I would really strongly request that we ask our administrators to document the amount of time that they spend on this, and that we look closely at how many qualified coaches we're really able to find, how many, of course, are district staff, and in addition to that, how many from the community would come in that have backgrounds, so that we can maintain quality. All that being said, I really am leaning to keeping the program in-house for another year at least, so that we can study it further.
Further comments? Carol?
I will support this motion. My concerns have to do with the quality of the program, and the concern that privatizing such a large program of the schools in such a short timeframe will leave us at a disadvantage in terms of what we already could provide for students. And I do want to express a great deal of appreciation to the coaches and people in the community that took a significant time, personal time out of their summer to try and really analyze the situation for, and making a realistic and concrete proposal for keeping this in district. And one of the big concerns that I have is with consolidation of our middle schools, that as, it was brought out by one of the people working on this, and I would tend to agree with it, that to make such a large change while we're trying to adjust already to the consolidation issues, as I imagine will be the case later this evening, that to me seems like a recipe for some real problems this fall. So, I am also very much for fact-finding and making the decisions based on fact, so I think this, extending it another year will enable us to really study this more and get more information.
Further comments? Genda?
Toni and Carol, boy, this is loud, bring up some, some good points, and I think we've all been very divided on this issue. I think we start from the same place, that we feel the best place for a program like this is in our school district, where we maintain responsibility and teachers are our coaches, and that makes the strongest homeschool connection, you know, and that's just what it's all about. I have some concerns also based on middle school consolidation, but they take a different path. I'm concerned with consolidating the four middle schools down to three, that there's going to be a lot of additional responsibilities for administrators this year. And this might, I would just hate to see a program detract, the athletic program and the resources, the time resources of administrators, that it would detract from the smoothest and best possible transition we can have for our middle schools. I think our top priority this year has to be having a positive school year for all three of our middle schools. In addition to that, our administrators will have the usual burdens of making sure state standards and curriculum and safety, and no child left behind, and there's just a tremendous amount of work, and they've expressed, I think they've expressed to us that, of course, whatever we ask of them, they will do. But, I worry that this is too much, too much work for the level of participation that we would hope for. I was interested in the earlier discussion that the Helena School District, when they contracted out, they had a 40% participation increase. I think the goal for the program has to be the broadest participation and the highest quality. So, as you can see, you know, I am torn. I would like to see this program stay in the district. I don't have a lot of experience with middle school sports. My kids were the kids that didn't go out for the sports, because they were, they thought they'd be cut, because it was a cut program. I would really like to see, you know, continuation of the no-cut philosophy, and also have us look very closely at having balanced ability groups, going to heterogeneous teams, and making sure that all kids can play in whatever, whatever shape this program takes for us. So, I guess what I come down to is that I am, I'm still divided. I, I understand what everyone is wishing and hoping for. I don't know if another year will get us to a different place, because we had this discussion a year ago, it's already been, we've already done the "let's give it one more year" thing. And I'm not sure the answers are going to be any easier next year. I do think it's a good idea, if it stays in-house, to be very, you know, to track the data, and, and just so that everybody realizes that we might be having the same discussion next year, should the Board decide to keep it in-house one more year.
Further discussion? Scott, and then Naomi?
Toni and Carol and Genda, we all have the same philosophy, that the FNO committee, we all said, we want to keep it in-house, and there are also good reasons to outsource it. We understand that. When the middle school principals in unison feel that outsourcing is probably the best way to go, that makes it very difficult to go against what the professional educators are telling us. However, I made the motion, and I truly believe that, in response to the question on the administrators having so many other things on their mind. That's absolutely true. This is going to be a very interesting year, depending on the outcome of tonight's meeting. But, what better place to spend your energies than on a group of children who may or may not receive attention in other aspects of the school? Academics, fine arts, very, very important in schools, but athletics has a very strong role there also, and I think that we should try and keep it there as long as possible.
Naomi?
What a difficult decision, because I actually agree with everything that everybody has said, because I think that we all want to keep it in-house. I'll just say at first that I'm not ready to outsource our program, and, and one of the things that I think is really compelling me to want to keep it a part of our schools is that while it's not maybe officially a part of our curriculum, I think in practice, middle school athletics really is a part of the curriculum, and really goes with, especially if we develop a no-cut program, goes along with that middle school philosophy, and I think that the best people to deliver our curriculum are our schools. And even if they have, we don't, if, even if all of our coaches are not teachers, it's still, you know, a program, and I, and I'm not, I think that if I were to be persuaded that outsourcing And I'm not, I think that if I were to be persuaded that outsourcing is a good idea, I would really need to see detailed plans and proposals from individuals in the community who are interested in taking it on. And even then, I think I would have a hard time giving it up. And I'm not, I don't have a child in sports either. You know, and again, having said all of that, I also don't want the administrators to feel as if I'm taking their workload lightly, because I'm not. And I think that if, as a school board, we decide to keep middle school athletics in our schools, then what we really need to do as a board is figure out how to make it work and not come to this point next year where we're trying to figure out whether or not we're outsourcing it. But if we're committed to keeping middle school athletics in our schools, figuring how to make it work, you know, for the kids, for the administrators, for the coaches, and for our budget. And maybe, you know, one of the major discussions we've had all throughout the year has been how important our programs are to us. And maybe this middle school athletics program can be a part of a larger discussion on how we sustain, you know, what we value the most, which is the education we're delivering to our kids. So I apologize to any administrators who feel as if I'm not taking their workload into account when I vote for this motion, because I really do respect the work that they do. But I would really like us to make this work for the district. And maybe that's something we can talk about at our retreat.
It's going to be a five-day retreat at this point. Further comment? Drake?
Looks like I don't really need to speak, but I thought I was going to. So I want to just speak out in support of this motion, although I don't get to vote on it. I think the most critical issue for me is having the hands-on experience that's so vital, and especially, I really believe, in the middle school years. I think extracurricular activities, athletics, can have a real positive impact on a student. So many times, it's critical to that student's enjoyment of the whole learning experience. Sometimes it's critical to whether he stays in school or not. I think it's best left in the hands of as many teachers as possible, although I know we do have some coaches that we outsource. But the vast majority of our coaches are on staff. And I just think that there's so many reasons that it's vital to have a teacher-coach in that, you know, the student, you know, child is kind of a complex little person, and there's a lot involved other than his athletic ability on the field. And I think a teacher-coach will be more concerned about the student as a whole. He'll be aware of, you know, how he's doing in school. And I think that concern and knowledge will carry over into how he might coach that student. So I think it's really important for that reason. I also think it's important, and as I speak, all of these are going to have exceptions. But generally, the vast majority of the time, that teacher-coach is going to have more experience than someone at the YMCA level. And I appreciate the people at the YMCA. Some of them will be long-term coaches. A lot of them are going to be young students. Quite a few of them, I suspect, might be college students. I think coaching ability is enhanced by years. I know, I coached for about 30 years myself, and I know I was a whole lot better coach later on in my career than I was when I was young. And I think the experience of that coach is very vital. I also think the coach, generally, the student's going to have the coach for three years in the middle school level, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The turnover is going to be greater if we outsource it. And so I think that continuity is another really important factor. I really, I really am curious about this Helena program. I just find it hard to believe, because my experience has been, I coached a lot of years and five years on the high school level, is that participation was generally higher just because the coach was in the building encouraging his athletes and students to turn out for the programs. I mean, that's been my experience, and I've seen it firsthand. I just, I find it hard to believe. I think there must be some extenuating circumstances in Helena. There's got to be some reason why the participation level went up that great, if it did. Because my experience has been, like I say, if the coach is in the school, he encourages those kids to participate. And a lot of times, all it takes is a little bitty nudge. I mean, it's amazing how little encouragement some kids need. And to be honest with you, there's a lot of parents that don't give them that encouragement, or they'll always just say, "Well, I'm going to let him do what he wants to do." Well, you know, we're parents, and I don't know if you can always let your kids do what they want to do. I don't think you can. And that coach knows that. And a lot of times, that little bit of encouragement's all it takes. And I've seen it happen time and time again. I guess I'll stop there. Thanks.
Joe?
I'd like to first say that I 100% agree with those two. And that's the same thing. I came down firmly, firmly on the fence on this one. So it was, I have given a lot of time over the last few weeks, and think about, talked with a lot of people. And my original position, you know, it's kind of driven by a budget thing in a way. And what I firmly believe, agreeing with Tony there, that our administrators, time is money. And we want, with the changes that are going on and with the cuts we've had to make in the past and here, we want teachers to teach and administrators to administrate and stuff like that. So we have to be careful about what we put on their plate. And I guess it did come down to a question of some of the time that that's going to demand of them in this changing year. But then I agreed with some of the other same things, the stability of the program from year to year. And I guess kind of what swung my vote a little bit is one of the ideas of giving everybody in the community more time. I would like to keep this more on our front burner for the committee work that we do on it. I don't know how long to give us to make a decision on it. It's hard during the program year of the time, and then we get pushed into the narrow window of summertime to all of a sudden ask people in the community, "Hey, can you come up with a program by the fall to run our middle school programs?" So I don't know quite when to evaluate the data that we do have coming in or to look for potential problems that this could benefit. I would certainly think budget, again, in the coming year, will drive that decision a lot. And so that's why I'm able to say for another year, I have no, I can live with another year of seeing how the program works in-house. I certainly agree with the philosophy behind it, that you want your school programs to be run by the school. It'll be interesting seeing if with the no-cut program, we go up in attendance and then therefore what that does to the coaching load, relationship with the teachers. And maybe we can get a quick read on that through the fall and winter sports and be able to make a decision more ahead of time, looking ahead, saying, you know, it was a good idea to maybe outsource. And another year, we'd be prepared to do that in a lot more ways, ask for other community input on those outsourcing things. So that's where I ended up.
Further comment?
Well, I guess I should probably weigh in on this. I'm just, I'm with Joe, right on the fence. I kind of, you know, I remember the discussion that we had last year where we said this was our last year, you know, and talked about giving it one more year. I can see what everyone's saying about looking at this in more depth, with more detail. And, you know, that's a legitimate concern, I think. I think I would like to say that I really appreciate the Y, how they've stepped forward and given us several proposals and really worked with us and tried to make a real effort to help us out here in this situation. I really think that has been very admirable, and I think it shows their commitment to the community and to be willing to do that, and I really appreciate that effort. So who knows how I'll vote on this, but it'll be a surprise. Yeah, Genda? Did you have, oh, okay. Further, more comment? Public comment? If you would like to comment on this, please come forward and give us your name.
I'm back. My name's Kelly Ryan. I'm from the Y. I just wanted to let you all know that I really enjoyed the process of working and putting a proposal together. And all that we're looking for from the Y is as many kids to get served as possible with a quality program. And if that is keeping it in-house, then so be it. So I guess that's it. If you have any questions about our proposal, I'm still here to answer any of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
I'm Beth Woody. I'm Associate Executive Director of the YMCA. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to bring the proposal together to you, and we hope that in the future, we'll be able to answer any questions you might have about that proposal. I do supervise two other programs that do occur after school through the middle school program, a pathways, computer lab at the YMCA, and the theater program at Washington and Rattlesnake and some other middle schools, which I can't think of right now. But I do want to remind you that those are taught by people who do care and who do make an impact on the child's day each day. It's important to us, as we look for funding for those programs in the future, that they are recognized as important people to the middle schoolers in their day, that they might not see them during the day, but they are there after school. And it's an important piece of our funding source to be able to share that with the funders, that even though they're not teachers during the day, they are an important aspect of an after-school program in the middle school system. So I just want to remind you that there are other mentors out there that are working with our middle school kids every day. So again, thank you on behalf of the Y for allowing us to work with you on that proposal and other projects that help the middle schoolers.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Oh, I'm Steve Gaskill. I'm from the university. And we kind of on very last moment received our FP to put together a proposal without very much information. And listening to the discussion here, I'm very glad to have heard what you're saying. My background was, I was an Olympic coach. I skated at a very high level. I've coached high school youth, lots and lots of years of coaching. And then I went back and my education is in activity and health. And my main concern is that we keep lots of kids active in sports programs and activity programs in the middle schools, because that's where they drop out of activity. Not just sports, but that's where they quit moving. You know, we've been said that we have a sedentary society, but really, we have an immobile society. We're not getting up. And I'm really concerned about the health, and our department is concerned about that. What I would say is that if you would like help on ideas for making the middle program work in-house, because I'm a big believer that coaching is teaching sports skills. It's not coaching, it's teaching. And teachers are great at teaching. That's what you've been trained to do. I also believe that coaches should have coaches' education. Teachers already know how to teach, but outside coaches need an education to do that. And so I think outside personnel that you bring in, that may not have a coaching background, need an education in that particular venue. So I'd be very happy to sit with a group, and I think the Y has done a great job bringing a proposal together. But we're here to help, and, you know, we want to see this work. So don't hesitate to call.
Thank you. Further public comment?
I'm Julie Jenkins, and I've been involved with the YMCA program for over 10 years now, along with the Quanis basketball, middle school athletics. And I have to apologize that I can't bring the basketball team tonight here, and so that you could get firsthand from all the kids to let you know what type of program that the Y has provided. It's a great program for all the kids that want to do it. Anyone can do that. Anyone can go out for middle school athletics in the middle schools. And if you want to do something extra, you can sign up and then play basketball for the YMCA, and you can also play Quanis basketball or AAU. So the kids, there's plenty of opportunity out there for them. However, from our experience for over the last 10 years with the YMCA program, you pay your fee, parents are the coaches, parents are the officials, and some nights, if you can't, you look around, you try to find officials for the games. And a lot of parents that don't want to officiate, they wear cowboy boots. They don't have to do that. So you're just left with anybody off the street that's coming in. And so as far as a quality program for the kids and a quality experience with the YMCA, it's not, it's not happening. It's just, you know, it's a great program for, if everybody wants to play, that's great. But I think it's important that we keep the middle schools with the teachers involved. I think it's very important for the kids. And like I said, if this comes up again next year, I would be happy to bring as many basketball teams with kids, and you can talk to them firsthand, and they can let you know exactly how they feel. But the priority, if we're going to rate basketball, we're going to rate it AAU, Quanis, middle school athletics, and then YMCA's on the very bottom list as far as the type of program that they provide, for what they teach the kids, unless you're lucky enough to have a parent that's involved that can teach the kids what they need to know. But a lot of times, like they said, you get kids that, college kids or people off the street, just to get the credits or just to be doing something, and they don't know the first thing about. I'm here to say for basketball is what I'm here for. But at any rate, thank you for your time, and I would appreciate if you guys could give us another year. And I think it would be well worth your time to talk to the kids themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Hi, my name is Kevin Grover, and I'm going to be an eighth grader at Meadow Hill. And in seventh grade, I was on the school soccer team and the basketball team. And in sixth grade, I had tried out for it and didn't make it. That made me want to work that much harder towards it in seventh grade, which ended up working out for me. And I've done Y soccer and Y basketball. And I've found that with, in seventh grade, with our coaches and like with Ms. Lacco, who we had for our soccer team, we've learned a lot from that. I learned a ton. And when I did it through Y, I never really learned anything. It was fun to be around my friends and play for a little bit, but never learned anything. And, see, what else? I guess I want to keep it with school, because I got to meet Ms. Lacco in seventh grade, so now I know I'll have her as an eighth-grade teacher, which is really cool. And I already know she's really nice. And in basketball, I got to meet one of the seventh-grade teachers I didn't get to have, which I really liked. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Hi, my name is Kathy Bergmeyer. Seen me before a couple of times. I guess I'm not totally up on everything, but part of my thinking was that, I'm not sure I understand if we've really answered the question of the two philosophical policy issues I think we need to make before we make a decision whether we in-source or outsource. I guess I heard Genda say something about the no-cuts, and maybe we've made that decision. I think that's an important decision to make. There's two issues I think you need to decide before you decide whether you're going to keep it in-house or whether you're going to go out. And that's whether you're going to have a cut or no-cut policy. My opinion is, I think you can do a program with no cuts, and I think that's the way to go. Also, whether you have the homogeneous or heterogeneous, or whether it's built on ability. And I lean towards doing it based on ability. I think you can build a program that can serve all the kids and based on ability. I have kids that are very competitive and very athletic. I'm one of those kids that was not athletic. I was the last kid picked when you played softball and all those things. But I know what it's like when you're on the other end and you miss the ball, and somebody who was very good was over there and threw it at you, and it's frustrating on both sides. I think you can make a program where you're instructing to the level of the kids and break it out into A teams and B teams. It's based on ability. It's not based necessarily even on grade necessarily, it's based on ability. I think you can do a really good program. When you get to the middle school, I think some of that is important. Track is one of those sports that I think any kid can play. I think you should, I mean, the Rattlesnake Middle School track team was great, and it was because of the great coaches they had, and it was all teachers. And you're right, it's the teachers there talking the kids into trying out, "Come on out," kids that had never played before. I think you have to make those two decisions on what your philosophy for the school district is before you decide whether you're going in or out. Because if you decide to go out, you have to tell somebody what your philosophy or your policy is going to be. So maybe you've made those, and I've missed that. But I really also believe that it should be in-house. I understand the issue about the hiring taking time, but if you outsource it, that's going to cost you. It's going to cost the program in some way. Somebody's going to have to pay for it. So the teachers' involvement, I think, is very important. I think they know where the kids are, they know what to watch for, that you've all talked about. It also allows your teachers to make some small stipends, which certainly helps when we can't pay as much as we want to pay. And I think when you outsource, you lose some control. And while you would work with anybody that you would outsource, you know, if you're having a problem, they're not your employee. And if it's a problem in the middle of the season, it's going to be difficult to deal with those kind of issues. So I think there's certain aspects to a program that are critical. I think Julie talked a little bit about the paid officials, all those things, having coaches, Steve talked about, having quality coaches. I think that's important when you start getting to the middle school level. There are lots of programs out there for some sports, but a sport like volleyball, this is the first time those girls are going to be exposed to it. And it's the only time until they get to high school. So I think it's important to have a good quality program, and I think we've done that in-house. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Well, my name's Steve Grover, and as much as I fear public speaking, my son stepped up here and did it. So now, here's my turn. So now here's, here's my turn to step up to the plate too, I guess. So I guess I just would like to really hear more and hope there's a lot more feedback from the board as far as what's going to happen over this next year. I'm very encouraged to hear that, that the decision's being, seems to be being made to keep it in-house. I think that's great. I think school spirit is still something that's important. I think athletics as well as spelling bees and science fairs and everything else all plays a part of that school spirit. I grew up here in Missoula, attended CS Porter Cougars and you know, those are, those are great memories that I had. And when I moved back, one of the most disappointing things that I went to was one of the first high school games that I went to, high school basketball game and saw that what used to be school spirit there seemed to have gone away. And I don't know the reason why that is, but I hate to see us taking steps at the middle school level that maybe takes away that importance and takes away opportunity to build that. So I'm very encouraged with that. I am concerned, there was the last person that spoke, you know, brought up the issue of, is this going to be a no-cut policy? I think, I'm involved with YMCA, my kids have been involved in the YMCA and I think the YMCA plays a very critical role in our community and I support them 100%. And I, I don't want to say that I think they fill that role of the no-cut program, but in a certain sense, they do. They are there for any child who wants to participate in a sport. As a, as a parent, parent volunteer coach, you can only do so much, but that's all part of that program. And I think it's a vital part of what we have and I don't want to take away from you guys at all for, you know, going through the effort of stepping up to make sure that our kids still had something if it was going to go out of the schools. So I am very interested, I guess, in hearing further discussion and I would hope that if this is, I didn't realize that this was kind of the second last breath that this was the last year, last year that this was going to be discussed. So I'd really like to see a formal process that gets parents involved, gets students involved with the board so that a year from now, we're not sitting at the same place saying, let's give it one more year, but we actually have a, you know, a firm commitment of how this goes forward. And I guess the last thing, and this is more to the parents that are out here, I feel for your guys' position. You're continually given less money to, to deal with and yet we're demanding quality programs and, and no-cut programs and everything that piles on top of that. And it's really up to us as parents and as a community and as a state, we've got to deal with a funding issue. And it'll be much, make your jobs much more doable, I think. So all of you parents, I encourage you, as things move forward and we start looking at things like tax policies and everything else, that we keep these types of meetings in mind, that we've got a, we've got a funding issue to deal with first and then it'll be a lot, we'll have a lot more options to deal with these other issues. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Further public comment? Further comment of the board, any further discussion? Oh, there we go.
You know, I couldn't pass this up. Barb Lacco. I've heard some great things tonight. Couple concerns, yes, additional work for administrators. Like to remind you, we have had coaches that have volunteered to give even more time to assist with that. Also with an in-district program that was proposed, there was the money that would have been available to hire the position that Corey Wolferman did have. Yes, it doesn't cover hiring coaches. We do have full-time assistant principals also now, which is a big difference in our building. So that's addition. Participation increase, I'd like to keep in mind that it'd be great to see our numbers go up 40%, but I can't see that happening. The numbers that we've been working with have been before cuts. So it's been all the kids that have come out for any sport and yes, only three of our sports have been a cut program. So it's been half. So I really, you know, we're going to have a few kids that will come out when it's no-cut, but I don't think we're going to go up 30, 40%. No-cut is a great way to go. We can work out a program that all the kids that come out get to play on a team. The heterogeneous, homogeneous fight can be duked out elsewhere. I'm not even going to go there, but we can work out a program that it's no-cut. It is going to cost some more money because you are more games, you're paying for referees, you're paying for additional coaches, but it's definitely something that we need to do. The one more year, that's great, but this is what happened last year when we got stumped on the heterogeneous, homogeneous fight and we said, let's just go back to the program we had and do it for one more year. And then we didn't hear, we, meaning coaches, didn't hear of committees or anything being formed to work on it again. I encourage you, please make sure that we work on it. Don't let it slide till the summer again. The U of M has a couple of times now mentioned about the coaching class that they would like to get going. That one more year would give us the chance to have that coaching class going and hopefully we'd be getting some coaches from that class. So I'd again, like to encourage you to stay in district, but let's make sure that we keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Any more comments of the board? Jen?
Well, I don't have a comment, I have a question. What would the process be since it seems that the board is going to vote to keep the program in, in-house, at least for another year? Those, those important questions that we still, the philosophical questions, and there were two alternatives in our F and O packet. There was one from the committee and an additional proposal. What would be the process for talking about those and making that decision?
Dr. Carr?
Thank you, Rosemary. I think that the, my suggestion would be that we bring, if the board votes to keep it in-house, that we bring those back to the Finance and Operations Committee. We talked about moving it, Finance and Operations is a kind of funny place, but because it was a budget issue, we have it there. I'd recommend we bring that back to the Finance and Operations Committee on July 26th and try to reach an agreement among the committee about what to bring forward. The administration can also do that without the committee, but I would recommend, given where we are, we do it with the committee.
Further comments or questions, the board? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to maintain the middle school athletic program in-house. All those in favor? Okay, we have, let's see. Unanimous? What do you think? You never know. All right, moving on, Dre. Our next item on the agenda is to award the appraisal of Roosevelt School Building and Grounds and the administration recommends trustees accept the proposal from Stevens and Company at a cost of no more than $6,000 with an anticipated completion date no later than August 25th, 2004. Is there a motion to that effect? This is elementary. Moved by hemples, is there a second? Second by toast. Is there discussion? Carol?
Once again to explain that I, I do hope we initiate a long-range planning committee and until that time, I do feel $6,000 is a lot of money to spend without a plan.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Okay, public comment regarding, regarding this issue?
Good evening, Judy Smith. To be very brief, since we all know each other's opinions on this topic. I do live at 224 East Crosby. This is the school that is near my home, my neighborhood. Association and others, the council and others have been very concerned about the fate of the school. So two thoughts to share with you. One is I'd be very interested in the criteria used for this selection. I'd like, like to know what that was because we certainly want to ensure no appearance of conflict of interest. There is a private interest involved here and many of us are concerned that that private interest is advantaged in some way. So we'd like to be certainly aware that that is not at play with the appraisal. And also at the last conversation which I attended, you all discussed making sure it was a multi-use appraisal, so I'm assuming that that's what's been asked for, but I would ask for clarification of that particular situation, that we're going to be looking at market use and multiple use, not just one particular kind of use. And as you well know, many of us would like you to keep this building and use it. We feel there's other, higher uses than this proposal, but we'll look to the appraisal. We'd like to hear the criteria and the possibility of the multiple use appraisal. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to respond to that? Yeah, sure.
The criteria that we used in this selection was basically that there'd be an MAI member, which essentially guarantees that they have certification as a, an appraiser. Another criteria was the timeline in which the, the work could be done because of the potential for the board having to put this as a ballot issue. So there is a timeline that the appraisal would need to be done in order to meet the election timelines. Another course, as with all of our proposals, is cost. So I think basically we did some due diligence. We did check with some local area banks to determine if the individuals that provided proposals were acceptable in their minds in terms of any financing that might take place if something were to follow after this appraisal or some transaction were to follow after the proposal. So those are basically the criteria that we used. In this particular case, as you can see from the responses, this was both the low bid and the most timely bid in terms of the proposals submitted.
Further public comment? And Carol, you'll have your question. Further public comment? Further public comment? Carol?
Bruce, it was just a question related to your criteria. You said that there is a time constraint regarding the election and how, could you explain what, what the time constraint is and how that played into the selection between appraisers?
The other proposal that was in the packet tonight gave a timeline of 60 to 75 days. One of the things that we have to do if this is going to be put onto a ballot, which the, probably the most desirable time to put it on a ballot if the board chose to put it out for public vote for authorization to dispose of this property should you accept the appraisal, is that you would probably want to have that election sometime in November with the general election. That would result in far less cost from an election standpoint if we were to do that. In order to do that and put it on the November ballot, you have to publish notice 40 days in advance of that timeline. So essentially, we were looking at needing to have an appraised value back no later than the middle of September. With this particular proposal with 30 working days, it could be guaranteed that the results would be back around the 25th of August. So that was an important criteria for us.
Scott and then Jim?
Another question for Bruce. You said that we did due diligence contacting financial institutions about the credibility of these two. They both came out okay?
You know, normally they will come out okay. If they're MAI certified, then you're generally not going to have any difficulty. But we did contact the lending institution that does considerable business with the Catholic schools to check on that very issue and they indicated there would be no difficulty with either one of these proposals or either one of these firms. This one in particular, they said they did a lot of work with and held them in, I don't know if I would say high esteem, but certainly a credible business partner.
Jim?
The Stevens firm is a well-known firm that does work everywhere. I mean, it's, has a reputation that's good. So I wouldn't have any qualms with that. Now, if a, a third party who's not in contemplation right now saw this appraisal and wanted to say, purchase the property over and above the appraisal price, how would that be accomplished? Because we have one offer, but there might be other offers, you know? This is not being framed for one particular buyer, is it? It isn't. It's for any person who walks down the road who has the money. Correct?
You know, that is a process that the board needs to decide upon. One of the things that will be required if the board chooses to dispose of this property is that you will need to, excuse me, you will not need to issue an RFP. But if you want to provide the community with the greatest ability to respond to a proposal to sell this property, then an RFP would be a way that the board could decide. That's a decision you need to make. Either way you go, my answer would be no, I don't think this is being oriented to any one particular party. One party has made an offer and that's what's probably prompted us to seek the appraisal at this point. But no, I don't think you would want to orient any kind of an offer to sell property to any one party.
Carol?
You made reference to the costs of putting this question on the ballot. Do you have an estimate of the cost of, to the district of adding this to the November ballot?
No. And the reason I say that, that way is the whole elections process this year changed dramatically from where it's been in the past. And I believe that we released some cost figures from the May trustee and levy elections to the Board of Trustees just recently. And we found that the cost of elections were very nearly double what they have been in the past because of the new elections process. So Carol, I'm sorry to say, I, I would really be hesitant to try and estimate that. Part of, I suspect it would be a lower cost than the May because we don't have the number of issues and the number of ballots to present. But beyond that, I, I really would be hard-pressed.
Comments or questions? Oh, Carol?
Well, I guess that, to me reinforces the need that we do need to put the horse before the cart and take a look at our facilities and do a long-range planning analysis before we find ourselves sort of tumbling one step after the other in a hurry to meet deadlines. Already it has been a factor in the criteria. I don't, I do not believe that there is a need, given the situation that we are in with our budget in August and the impact that that would have on our budget, our school district budget for the 2004, 2005 school year. So I do think that this is not a wise use of the $6,000, which may then lead to many tens more thousand dollars if people decide to hurry and put this on the ballot without us even stepping back, forming a facilities committee and looking at our long-range plans.
Further comments? Any further public comment? Okay, we have a motion on, oh, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate something that Bruce mentioned the last time this issue was discussed, that an appraisal is a starting place for negotiations, right Bruce? And should not be viewed as the price that will be accepted. Am I correct in that? That's what you said?
I think that is accurate. The appraisal, in my estimation, would simply give the board a feel for what the value of the property is, given several different uses of the property and Ms. Smith mentioned multi-use and market value. And there'll be several different bases for the appraisal that will come in, but that will simply give you as a board an idea as to whether you want to move ahead. And if you do decide to move ahead, that's simply a baseline for us to begin the negotiations.
All right, further comments from the board? Or public comment? All right, we have a motion on the floor to accept a proposal from Stevens and Company at a cost of no more than $6,000 for the appraisal with an anticipated completion date of no later than August 25th, 2004. All those in favor? Opposed? Ballin', opposed. The motion passes. Okay, moving on to Buildings, Grounds and Transportation, Mr. Bauchek has no report tonight. Under Personnel, that is on the consent agenda. And moving on to item 12, I will read the consent agenda. Under Finance, we have approved May 2004 claims, elementary, secondary. Approved grant application summaries, elementary, secondary. Award bid for alterations to Building F and Science Storage at Big Sky High School Secondary. Approved resolutions 2005-1E and 2001, 2005-1S to allow sale or disposition of furniture, equipment and other undesirable or unsuitable items, elementary, secondary. Authorize RFPs for student data management software package and for transportation routing school boundary software package, elementary, secondary. and for transportation routing, school boundary software package, elementary, secondary; authorize Powell County High School to enter MCPS Transportation District for 2004-2005 school year, secondary; authorize Lolo Public School District to enter MCPS Transportation District for 2004-05 school year, elementary, secondary; permission to bid and award the bid for the modular move relocation from Rattlesnake School to Washington Middle School pending ratification of middle school consolidation at the July 13, 2004 board meeting with board ratification of permission to bid and award the bid at the August 10, 2004 board meeting, elementary; approve negotiated transportation agreements with Beach Transportation and Conley Transportation for 2004-05 and 2005-06 school years, elementary, secondary. Under personnel, we have the personnel report, elementary, secondary. Under old business, we have adopt the second reading of revisions to board policy 4223, workplace fundraising charitable campaign, elementary, secondary. Under new business, approve first reading of proposed board policy 5013 harassment, elementary, secondary; approve first reading of revisions to board policy 1401, records available to public, elementary, secondary; and approve superintendent's recommendation regarding administrators' excess vacation days, elementary, secondary. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Sadler. Is there a second? Seconded by Toth. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Clark?
Thank you. As I believe all of our board members know, we've scheduled a mini-retreat for Thursday, July 29, beginning at 9:00 a.m. in this building, in this room. We anticipate going till about 8:00 p.m. that evening. We've been unable to find a time during the summer months to schedule the Friday evening and all-day Saturday for our board retreat that we had hoped for, but we still need to know if we can schedule that in September, excuse me, 17th and 18th. I think Trudy has checked with just about everyone, but we need to know for sure whether we can do that. Upcoming events, of course, tonight is our regular meeting in this room. Our finance and operations committee meeting is scheduled for July 26 at 6:00 p.m. in this room. That's a change of date. Usually, it would be the 27th. Please note that it is the 26th, and I believe that change of date has been posted also. Our PNNP committee meeting is at July 28 at noon in Room 14 at the Sixth Street Building, and then our board retreat, I've mentioned already, on the 29th. And then our next regular meeting, August 10 at 7:00 p.m. in this room. And just a couple of other comments tonight. First of all, I want to thank the Pakistani educators for being here this evening. I had the pleasure of speaking with the group at the University of Montana a few weeks ago, and I appreciate very much the opportunity that I received and your response to that. And also, thank you for being here tonight. It's a real pleasure to see you. Also, thanks to Carol for commenting on Jane's being a mom, Jane Ryder. I went to the hospital today and saw the baby Nicholas and Jane. Both mother and baby boy are doing fine, although they had a little excitement when he was coming into the world and Jane, but everything's fine now. So I appreciate very much you bringing that up, Carol, and he's a cute little guy, and Jane is very, very happy. Also, I just want to let everyone know that I do anticipate some changes to our policy and procedures related to our meetings and budgets as a result of the CROPS decision that's, that has come down from the Montana Supreme Court. So we do anticipate changes in the future with that. And also, we do want to let you know, those of you here in the audience tonight and those of you watching, that we want to ensure that the public's right to know and the public's right to participate is a part of our dealings. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Under old business, item A was on the consent agenda, which moves us to item B to revisit the 2004-05 preliminary secondary budget decision. And we have administrative recommendation to take action to ratify the decision of the board in adopting the preliminary secondary budget that was done on March 24, inclusive of any modifications acted upon during this July 13, 2004 meeting. Is there a motion to that effect? Moved by Mr. Sadler. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Lamb. Is there discussion?
Do I get to do my, I have my, I have a presentation to make when you're ready?
Would you like to do your presentation?
Whenever you're ready. You want to do it before any comments?
I'd be all right.
All right. For those, I would. Thank you. For those of you in the audience, we do have some additional packets tonight that are available that I'm going to go through. So Jennifer, I think, has them at this table. If you would like to receive a copy, we don't have enough for everyone, I don't believe, but we have packets for people to share. Jennifer, do you have them on the table over there?
Yeah.
Okay. And for those of you on the board, if you didn't bring your packet with you, we do have an extra you can share with, you do have tonight. So as any of you who might want to get that copy, if you look at the beginning of this, which is page one, we had an error with our page numbering under the packet summary, so the, every page just moves forward one. So the announcement concerning the release of budget documents is actually page two, and we'll go forward from there. Tonight, we do have the opportunity to revisit the preliminary budget decisions that were made October 24 of 2004, as, excuse me, March 24 of 2004. As I believe most people know, we have put the documents on display at the Sixth Street Building. We also have created a CD or electronic format for those documents as well. Some members of the public have been in our office reviewing the documents. Others may have reviewed the documents on the electronic format or by looking on the website at the Missoulaian. I think that Jane, before she went on leave, posted the entire, the entire number of documents. The announcement about that posting of those documents is on page two of your packet. If you look then at pages three and four, you will see our budget preparation calendar for this year. We began in November and had various board meetings, board work sessions, public hearings throughout the coming months to look at our budget and the preparation work that had gone through that. Those are all documented on this budget preparation calendar, beginning in November of 2003. If you look at page four, and just a reminder that at the June 8 board meeting, the board took action to adopt a new additional meeting schedule and to look at revisiting our budget's decisions made on March 24. So page five and six is a copy of what was on the website concerning this, and beginning on March, or, excuse me, beginning on June 28, and then again on July 6, we had question and answer sessions here in this room, a public hearing on July 8, beginning at 4 o'clock. We did have a recess and began again at 6:00 p.m. that evening. And then, of course, tonight, revisiting the preliminary budget decisions made. Just for information for those of you who may be watching out in, on MCAT Tonight and the people here in our boardroom, Montana does not require a preliminary budget to be adopted. So we're working right now with preliminary budgets. Our school district and our school board has, or have, adopted preliminary budgets over the years, primarily for work with staffing and this year, some other issues that dealt with our district as a whole. But again, preliminary budgets are not required, something that we have done, and then the fold on the final budget comes in August, and that is required by law and by OPI standards. Throughout this process, my recommendations that came to the board, and that's part of my responsibility under policy and my job description as well, is to bring you recommendations relative to a budget. My recommendations were based on my desire for the district to be able to provide the best education programs that we could for the students that we serve, given the resources we have. And during this process, and I'll take you through a few of these in a minute, but one of the values that I had was to preserve the middle school program and concept in our district. Also, that preserving the middle school concept in our district is something that has been valued through at least three studies that I'm aware of over the past several years, where each time the concept of middle school was reiterated, that we wanted to keep that. And I guess if Cheryl Wilson would be willing to just say a few words about the middle school concept and why that's important to us at this point, is that acceptable?
Aren't we talking about the secondary?
We're going to do an overlay of everything, Jim, and the secondary action will be first.
Okay. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak about our middle schools in Missoula. In 2000, the district created a middle school review committee that included 15 teachers from grade 6 through 8, one principal, two central office administrators, four community members, four students, and a trustee. This committee's work followed the works of study groups in 1987, 1994, and 1997 that formed and recommended improvements for the delivery of education to this age group. The 1987 study recommended that, among other things, the middle schools be created to serve from 500 to 600 students, that they serve, that full-time exploratory staff be assigned to each middle school, and that music students be able to participate fully in the exploratory program. The 1994 study recommended further in-depth study of interdisciplinary teaming, exploratories, and the activities models, because while other elements in the original recommendations seem to be functioning well, these elements seem not yet to be reaching the expectations of the original study. In 1997, an outside evaluator, Dr. Peter Carperelli, noted a significant district-wide commitment to the middle school model. He noted that the value of teaming was accepted, but that sometimes teams were not always connected to each other and to the school as a whole. He recommended increased action research at each individual school to focus them collectively to synthesize local data and middle school best practice research. This recommendation fit well with our district's school improvement planning process that really took off at about that time. Finally, the 2000 middle school review committee listed the following essential elements of effective middle-level education. Educators committed to young adolescents, a shared vision and mission in each school, high expectations for all, adult advocacy for every student, family and community partnerships, a positive safe school climate, a challenging and integrated curriculum, varied teaching and learning approaches and assessment, and flexible organizational structures. Organization in small teams was the recommended structure for curriculum development and integration, varied instructional strategies for early intervention, and for flexibility in meeting student needs and developing school climate. In May of 2004, in fact, the National Middle School Association put out their most recent research synopsis and strongly advocates for the benefits in terms of student achievement as well as student self-concept in the value of those small learning teams. The middle school model and philosophy of instruction has a 17-year history in this district and was most recently reaffirmed by the 2000 review committee. The middle school model in Missoula is delivered in a way that each student takes seven courses at a time: communication arts, math, science, social studies, health enhancement, a music class, and an exploratory class, which is vocational arts rotating with visual arts and world languages. With the middle school model, the state accreditation standards allow for music and exploratory classes to be offered in balance, but requires them of all students. To date, they have allowed each community to determine what that balance is. As we looked at that model versus the junior high model, which is where the question about savings would come up, a school, in order to receive, to gain any savings, we would have to move from the middle school model to a junior high model unless you wanted to attempt to offer the middle school model with a six-period day for students with all of the exploratories, including music, offered in only one of those periods, which, of course, would mean six weeks of music, six weeks of arts, six weeks of foreign language, six weeks of vocational, et cetera. If that were not accepted, then by state junior high accreditation standards, students would still have a full year of communication arts, math, science, and social studies. They would receive only a half year of health enhancement, and then they would elect to take a half year of three of the four electives: music, vocational tech ed, visual arts, or world languages. So simply put, they would receive at most half of the music and half of the health enhancement they currently receive. So the savings in losing that model would be in music and in health enhancement staff, and the impact to all students would be a 50% or more loss in music and in health If you were to combine the middle schools to receive that savings into three, the educational program that's been recommended through a series of studies over the past 17 years would remain intact. The three remaining middle schools would return to the middle school size range of 500 to 600 that was originally recommended in 1987, with Meadow Hill just slightly under that in our projections. There are 17 schools serving this age range in the double-A districts in the state. Calispell 7th grade only Linderman School serves 308 students. Two of the four billing schools serve 529 and 561 students. One, Bozeman Middle School, serves 532. Our schools are projected to be between 480 and 600. The other 10 schools in the double-A's in the state are larger than our largest, holding 614, 619, 699, 721, 789, 845, 847, and three over 1,000 students. Missoula middle schools, students are collectively achieving a high level of education compared to state and to national averages. Most recently, the No Child Left Behind Act has required statewide testing that shows average scores at each middle school ranging from the 55th to the 75th percentile on a nationally-normed test. However, as you know, No Child Left Behind asks for a measure of adequate yearly progress that reflects the movement of every subgroup within a school, based on ethnicity, special ed qualification, ESL, and socioeconomic standards, to move towards 100% proficiency. Last year, like most schools in the state with a measurable, as in more than 10 special ed student, population, Missoula middle schools made, did not make expected scores for the special ed population. In every case, the special ed population failed to perform at national norms expected of their non-special education peers. While a 45 NCE or 50th percentile dead center average score is expected of all students, it's also expected of all special ed students, a flaw in the logic that is currently being remedied on several fronts, but a standard, however unrealistic, that was used this past year. Some of you have noticed that Rattlesnake was listed as having made AYP while the other middle schools were not. This is true because of a special clause called Safe Harbor. While the Rattlesnake Special Education scores were below the required 45 NCE, and in fact, were below the district average, they were at least 10% higher than the Rattlesnake Special Education scores were the year before, so they earned Safe Harbor. Improvement is a good thing, but the statement that Rattlesnake was the only middle school that made AYP and therefore was performing better academically than all the other middle schools in the district is a mistaken one. As you know, the tests for this year have changed. The scores that students must achieve are being determined at the state level this summer. Modifications have been made in special education assessment approaches, and we await the results to be delivered after the school year begins. However, I can tell you that the nationally-normed ITBS results are in, and both math and reading in our district's middle schools have improved again this year over last year's scores. Good work is being done in all of Missoula's middle schools in conjunction with the high level of parental support that Missoula's educators receive in working together to educate Missoula's children.
Does anyone have any questions for Cheryl? Jennifer?
Just to save you a trip, Cheryl, since it's sort of on topic, there has been a public comment that K8 schools would have been another alternative that we didn't consider. So can you address whether or not that would save money and what it means programmatically?
As the, as the various review committees have looked over the years at how to best serve this population, that has been part of the discussion. In fact, that's how we were organized prior to the first study that recommended the move. The difficulty in terms of savings, if a savings is realized, it's realized because you turn the, you don't deliver the same program to the 7th and 8th graders that you do currently in a middle school. We receive additional funding for 7th and 8th graders. We receive the high school level funding, but it comes with it, the requirements that I listed before, to either offer the junior high model or the middle school model to meet the needs of those students. If in a K8, you were to, if you were to go to a K8 to save money, you, you would have, let's see, if we were to organize as K8s across the district, then the exploratory and music staff would be traveling among more of them, because there'd be smaller numbers of 7th and 8th graders to serve in each of those schools, so you'd be paying for more travel time, and so consequently, there would be no savings. So if there were to be a savings, it would be in returning to an elementary school model, but the trouble with that savings is that it comes with a decrease in funding from the state, because you're now delivering an elementary K8 education, so that the financial savings would not be there. savings would not be there.
Further questions? Cheryl?
Could we post this report on the website? Or get copies of it? It had a lot of good factual information.
Jennifer? Call me to have this. And have a copy. Yeah. Speak that into my.
Copies of the middle school study committee report were part of our information that we got during the budget process this year. But I'm saying this, I have that middle school study. I'm asking for this report tonight.
Essentially, what I have was the summary of that middle school report. I did include the difference between the junior high model and the middle school model, which I also presented, and it's in one of your packets earlier, but we could connect that. And then finally, I did do the comparison of the size of the schools.
And that's not in the.
Yeah, that's right. That's not. That's in the piece.
Further questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. That was one of our, one of my desires, is to make sure that I recommended that we keep the middle school model. In terms of our high school issues related to staffing issues, you recall that last year, we reduced our full-time equivalency by approximately 20 teachers at our high school level, and we were able to continue our basic program with, we did not cause significant differences to the program in the high schools. This coming year, if the board revisits and makes that same determination, we'll be reducing approximately seven additional FTE teachers at the high school level. Again, we believe that we can provide the program with that change of staff. And of course, all of this issue about looking at reducing staff or closing schools has a lot to do with our declining enrollment. If you look at page seven in your packet, you can see some history and some projections of enrollment totals. And at the, if you look at the very left side, the dark triangle, excuse me, the dark diamond is the high school enrollment. If you go over to 2001, you see that our enrollment peaked at 4,098, and these are the numbers as of the October student count date. And after that, we'll see a decline in our high school enrollment. And part of what we heard last year relative to our enrollment is that we will probably, overall district-wide, continue to decline about, for about 10 years, if the demographers were correct. But the high school enrollment did peak in 2001, and that, since that time, has declined, and that is what's led to the reduction in our FTE at the high school level. If you look at the triangle, the elementary school, starting at 4,163 back in 1993, you'll see that that has been on a, basically, a general decline until 2002, where we were approximately, what, 800-plus kids less than we had been. And then a slight increase, 3322, slight increase to 3361, a slight increase, 3366, and so on, is expected out. So a slight increase in our K-5 enrollment, which is good news. Unfortunately, we didn't hold our increase this year, as I think most of you remember, and we are actually lower than we were at the end, than anticipated. Then the circles are the middle school, and basically, that was flat from 93 in terms of enrollment. At 1993, we had 1,997 kids, and relatively flat until 1999, it started to decline a little bit more, 1,860, 1,822, and so on. You can follow those numbers along. The middle school enrollment this year for next year will be somewhat down, 1770 was 2003, looking at 2004 projected to 1703. And the actual work that we've done with our principals right now, we don't have that many students registered. We hope they come. We hope some more come. We don't have that many right now. But that general decline in our enrollment is what has led to some of the difficulties with our budgets and with our number of staff or schools that we have. On page eight, you see a school-by-school enrollment, and this is better in color. I'm sorry that it's not in color tonight. But the idea that you can see continues. For instance, if you take a look at the very bottom, the very bottom line, which is, I believe that is Prescott, I'm sorry, I believe it's Prescott. And the general decline, the height again, 1995, 96 for that particular school, and all of those general declines of our enrollment. You see the very precipitous decline in the top square, Cold Springs, and of course, that also was mirrored by the Dickinson, excuse me, by the diamond that is, the Russell School. Russell School is the next one, just under that, where you see the precipitous decline, of course, is when Chief Charlo opened, and that is how most of the students were accommodated that went to that point. You also then have the closure of Dickinson and Roosevelt, and an increase in 98, 99, is that correct? 98, 99, for two other schools. It's hard to follow, I know, without color, but the general decline in our enrollment is what has been difficult for us. And I do have those totals. The total we had in 1990, 91 in K-5 schools was 4,299. This last October, 2003, 2004, we had 3,326 students, 3,326, so a decline of 973 students during that timeframe, and we ended our year in K-5 schools at 3,242, so we lost another 84 children during the school year in our K-5 schools. You've got the K-5 enrollment history on number nine, page nine. Page 10 and 11 chronicle the middle school enrollment, a little bit different format, but the peak year for C.S. Porter is this year, 511 students as of October 3rd, over on the right-hand column, October 03, excuse me. The peak for Meadow Hill was in 1994, at 615 students. The peak on the next page for Washington Middle School was in 1993, 564 students. And our peak for Rattlesnake in 1997 was 454 students. I've also included in your packet tonight on pages 12 through 17, I believe, a history of secondary and elementary budget reductions from 1997, 98 through 2003, 2004 for the secondary. If you look at that total on page 13, you'll see that over that timeframe, we've had to reduce high school budgets by $2,310,000, $585 to meet the requirements for salaries and benefits, which many of you know are very high percentage-wise in our district. High school, approximately 86.5% salaries and benefit plus fixed costs, give us a very small amount of discretionary money. The high school, about 6%, I believe, if I remember that correctly, Bruce, is the discretionary, a little less than 6% at the high school. If you look at the elementary reductions on 14 through 17, beginning in 1994, that elementary, those cuts have been almost $6 million to meet our responsibilities for salaries and benefits and fixed costs, and those discretionary dollars that we could spend in the district are approximately 4% this year. On page 18 begins the, look at the spreadsheet that we began with for our meeting on March the 24th. The top of the spreadsheet talks about additions, and the total column, the amount where you see total written for the top part, $1,414,077. That amount of addition was what the budget team and I worked with, and I brought to the board as a recommendation to the board. You might want to know that the secondary team started out with approximately, requested approximately $1.9 million of requests for increase. So before this spreadsheet even got to the board for the 24th, about a half a million dollars had been reduced from their request to increase the budget. What was left, this million four, are what the budget team and then I subsequently bring to you. I may have made changes that they, from their recommendations. It's my responsibility to bring it to you. I believe that these are more important. In other words, they are something we need to do, even if it means reducing something else. So the million four is what I believe we need to have to provide the program for the students. Then the bottom of the page, oh, so one more thing about the additions. If you look at the amount column, you'll see some that have zeros beside them, are listed, and beside them a value. For instance, if you look at line 10, the data management position, that's one of the positions that eventually I said to you I can do without impacting the general fund. And so even though the cost would be, the value would be $13,500 approximately, the zero in the amount means that I did not think that that was so important that we needed to reduce the general fund somewhere else to get it. Let me give you another example. The Executive Director for Special Education is the next line, and I think you all remember from our discussion that I recommended that that $95,000 be covered through IDEA carryover funds and not impact the general fund. That's why there's a zero in the amount column. It does not impact the general fund. Now, the bottom portion, the reductions, are the things that the budget team and then I brought to you as recommendations for reductions in the budget, and at that night, the amount to the good was $9,297 as of that evening. If you look at page 19, you will see a similar amount, slightly different amount, but this is how I started working with the numbers in a format that's a little bit different than Bruce's spreadsheet, which is on page 18. But this particular recommendation had the budget at $13,992 to the positive side. The next page is a different way of looking at that. Page 21, another issue, another version that we looked at. And then on page 22, you will see the result of our work on March 22nd. Let me make sure I'm still typing the right number for you. Now, since, can you still hear the right? Since, since the 24th of March, we've had a couple of changes in our budgets. One is, if you look at page 23, this is back to Bruce's format, and if you look at line three under reductions, you will see a bold-faced line, and that line has changed by nearly $10,000, and that's because of the IDEA change, and this happens to us every year. The IDEA funds that we receive change throughout the process, and this is approximately $9,000 or $10,000 more than it was on the 24th. So if you look at the very bottom, you will find that the budget balance, we're $18,852 to the positive side for our high school budget. I have displayed now on the, if we can get the light, Gary, did you get that? Thank you. I've displayed what I'm recommending for the high school budget at this time. Oh, it's not in focus? You're so correct. Thank you, Rosemary. And of course, the IDEA increase is the highlighted, the bold-faced number, 107, 306. That's different than it was on the 24th. And at the bottom, we are now $18,852 to the positive side. Some of you will remember that we budgeted for a certain amount of retirements, and in this particular case, this, the line for retirees not replaced, line 35 on my screen, is a number that Bruce anticipated. When we did the budget on March 24th, we actually didn't have that many, but now I believe I'm correct in saying we do. So Bruce's projection at this time is correct. Could that change again before school starts? It could. We don't know for sure. But this is part of the process that we do go through so that we can update this, and Bruce has been, if you look at Bruce's projections over the years, some of you on the board that have been here that have gone through the process, remember that the most Bruce has been, had at end-of-year money is less than 1.2%. Actually, it's 1.14% unexpendited funds at the end of a school year, which is very good. Over the last, I think I have four years, Bruce, is that, something like that? But that's a very excellent job of budgeting that Bruce has done. So this is my recommendation for the secondary budget.
Jeff?
You mentioned, couldn't resist, couldn't you?
I'm sorry.
What did you do?
She gave buddy ears, yeah. You mentioned that the, your staff originally gave you a recommendation for a $1,009,000, and you came back with a reduction. What was that reduction?
Jimmy, you, I didn't bring that, but it's in the big books over here. I can show you the, we.
Just generally, what were they? What kind of things were they?
Extra time for trainers, additional, yeah, do you have got it, Cheryl?
Well, on page 23, the places that you have zeroed out are.
That's part of it, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but these are things that you, as the superintendent, decided that you didn't get along without? Is that, is that how you came to this decision?
It's a combination of the budget team work and my work, but my final recommendations were usually in line with theirs, not always. But they were ones that I did not believe were important enough to be at the expense of some other program or some other part of the budget.
Okay, now, I never have remembered a presentation by a budget team. Only presentation I've ever remembered is where you actually presented this information to us.
That's correct. That's my responsibility.
Right. So the budget team basically presented to you, is that what they did?
That's correct.
Okay. So the recommendations we received from the, from you was basically your work?
It's, the final product is mine.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any comments or questions about the secondary budget?
I would like to say that thank you to the voters in our county. Line 28, which is the building you serve, which was an offset to our general fund of $300,000, was very well-passed by our people. That would have been a very difficult thing for us had it not happened. We do have a concern about the budget amendment. However, we won't know that until next year, and if you look at Larry Johnson's work over the years with you, his projections for enrollment are very, very solid and very strong. And so we, what I'm concerned about is, we have yet to see for sure if that'll happen. You do need to be aware of that.
Can you explain that a little bit in more detail for the new board members?
Bruce?
Generally speaking, for the last several years at the secondary level, we've been able to do a budget amendment because we've had increased enrollment. Essentially, what a budget amendment means is that you have a cap on your general fund, but then in addition to the regular general fund, you have a reserve, and the reserve typically is used to pay your bills from. And the reserve typically is used to pay your bills from July until tax receipts come in in November or December. So there's always an amount of money in there. It can never exceed 10 percent of your total budget. But there's always an amount of money down there that's called reserve. Now, if, as we have had in the secondary budget for the last several years, if as of October 1st, when you do that student headcount, you have an increase in students from the preceding year, even though you may have a decline throughout the rest of the year, if you have an increase in October, you can do a budget amendment calculated by the funding formula for the state of Montana that allows you to take some of the money out of your reserve. And like I say, we've done that for quite a number of years. So in this particular year in the budget process, we anticipated that we would have an increase in October of students at the secondary level. And that's what Jim's a little queasy about. We're not entirely sure we're going to get that increase. But as a result of that anticipation, we planned on a budget amendment of $100,000, being able to go into that reserve and use it to offset some general fund expenditures. Now, if we don't get the increased enrollment, then you cannot do the budget amendment. And you can't get at the budget reserves essentially for any other reason other than an act of God. There are some, there are six reasons, but basically it's virtually impossible for you to get at the, at the reserves. Delinquent taxes and increased enrollment are really the only two ways.
Did you want to say more about?
There are a couple of other things that I might point out to you. Because, first of all, because of the increase in the IDEA funds, there are a couple of things here in the curriculum area that were reductions that you may want to consider amending what you did before and putting them back in. That's certainly up to you. But if you, as you see, this is a very small amount needed to balance the budget. There are also a couple of other things, just for those of you that may be new on the board or new in the audience tonight. IDEA, I think I said, that's the special education funding. If I didn't mention that before, just to make sure that people understand that. And these are funds that we, that change two or three times, three times a year, Bruce?
Well, you really don't know the final word until sometime in latter part of June.
Okay.
But the rest of it's just estimates. So yes, it changes every time.
And other things for you to understand, this YFP, the Young Families Program, we looked at a title offset. We think we have another way of doing that, Cheryl, if I'm right about that.
It's not Title I, but yeah.
It's not the same title.
Title II.
Title II.
I'm sorry. Title I, Part B, so Part II is, that's money that comes in in October.
For those of you that may be new or did not know what that YFP means, that's the Young Families Program. The workers' comp credit is something that, Bruce, we get a credit back. Our workers' comp rates are very high. But we do get a comp credit some years, and this year we did again, and this is the secondary portion of that. And we are still negotiating the beverage contract, so that $150,000 that we anticipate is still being worked on right now. Technology fund offset, there are certain things that we can charge against the technology fund, and this is an offset to do that off the general fund. But we also learned this year during the budgeting process that we can use some other funds to support general fund now, which is the new interpretation. And I just want to review that for our public so that they understand some of this. We can use rental fund dollars to support general fund needs. We can use the building fund. We can use the proceeds from property sales. We can use the flex fund if the state does have funds for that, which we have not received. I think only one year, Bruce, we've received flex funds?
Yes.
And we can do some other technology fund offsets to the budget. We did not recommend that to you, but you can offset the non-depreciable portion of your technology fund. What that means is for any salaries, you can spend money out of the technology levy dollars for salaries and benefits that directly support technology up to a certain amount because you cannot get into your non-depreciable amount, otherwise you don't qualify to continue your levy for the technology fund. We did not recommend doing that this year, but that is another fund that you have.
You said that if we wanted to add something, this would be the time to talk about it, right?
I believe, I believe that's correct.
Well, I'd like to see if we could possibly add back the curriculum issues budget. It's a small amount of $3,600. And I like, and it's needed for the issues in the curriculum department, to support the, of the curriculum department. And I think it's an important issue, and if we, if we could all add it back, I'd like to see if we could do that.
I think there would need to be an amendment to the motion.
Yeah, I would like to amend my original motion to add back the $3,600.
Actually, we don't need to, because it includes the changes that we make, the supplemental changes.
Right. I'd like to see, if there's any other support?
Well, why all does that give off?
Cheryl, Cheryl's here, she can talk to us.
Most of that is for work that we do with teachers as we, for example, this June, we had several different curriculum committees. Those are groups of teachers that get together. On the high school side, we had our math teachers get together, and they developed supplemental worksheets for Integrated 2 and Integrated 1, so that teachers have more materials to teach with during the course of the year that are aligned to places where we found that the text that we had was insufficient. So it's the kind of funds that we use to pay for additional curriculum work like that.
Support state programs.
Bruce, does that mean?
We actually need teachers' work after the school.
Isn't that significant? Cause there's a, I think there's a lot of cases.
We're trying to clarify what the motion was, or at least in my mind. I understood the motion to be, to accept administrative recommendation, this spreadsheet for adoption of a preliminary budget.
Correct.
The changes that we make.
Inclusive of any modification. Okay.
So I think we're okay.
Is there support for me to zero that?
Yeah, I think it's a nine. So then that puts us needing more, right?
No, we're $15,000 to the good.
Oh, $15,000. Okay, Carol?
When will we get some information about what we're talking about with the beverage contract?
We've been working on that, and we've now contacted more than, let me back to just a bit. When we looked at this beverage contract once before, there was one primary vendor that provided the service of sitting down and negotiating with the primary beverage providers, Pepsi and Coke in this particular case. Since that time, which has now been a span of three, four years, there are more players in that particular arena, more companies that provide that kind of service. So we've been in discussions with, with those individuals. We already have a proposal from one of those companies. So the next thing I believe that we need to do is review the proposal that we have, see what other proposals that we can get from various companies, sit down and bring back to the board a recommendation on whether we want to enter into a contract for a company such as this to negotiate the beverage contract, or whether we want to make the decision to do that internally, in-house. In terms of timeline to try and answer your question, I don't see that being completed by any, any earlier than I would say late fall. There's just an awful lot of information to look at and to assess. So we're going to be behind the timeline in terms of a recommendation for a beverage
I participated in the Nutrition Policy Committee that Jim Sadler chaired, and I would like to participate in, in information and decision-making on the different options for the beverage contract. I'm wondering if there's a way to, who's, how we're going to make that decision in terms of offering the board a couple of options to choose from. I'd like to know, I mean, I'm excited to hear that there's more out there than Pepsi and Coke, and I hope that there's something that might satisfy everyone's thirst of it be healthier.
Carol, the normal way for us to do that would be to come back through our committee process, which is how our structure is right now. So I would anticipate Bruce would be bringing that, that information back through Finance and Operations.
So do you imagine we would get more than one recommendation? In other words, some choice to examine a couple of different contracts?
I would. Bruce, you agree?
Yes, I think what you're going to see, that we could bring back to Finance and Operations, I think you can see the proposal from one or more companies that would actually come in and do the negotiations with the primary beverage providers, as well as an alternative, what it would look like money-wise, cost-savings-wise, if we were to do it internally. And probably a comparison of what some of the other districts across Montana, or perhaps the Northwest have done. So I think what we're going to provide to you first is what are the alternatives in proceeding with the beverage contract? At this point in time, we have no preconceived notions about what's the best way to go, contracting with an outside firm to negotiate or looking at it. We're primarily still plucking information about the alternatives that are available.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, we have more money there that's not spent. Why, what about the assessment software? We're very close to the $16,000.
At this point, that, that was originally in the budget prior to the state's whole change and No Job Left Behind and their, their testing and their assessment. Realistically, I believe that, that we won't be purchasing any of our own assessment software to add another layer to what the state is already doing.
So that's unique for you.
Yeah, that's really not one. Thank you both for thinking.
We want the curriculum department to be supported, and you know that. Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Do you have anything else? Is there a public comment concerning the secondary budget? Okay, are we ready to vote for further discussion for this? Okay, Carol?
Well, I guess my comments, you started with a bit of an overview with the middle school philosophy. And before we vote on this, I would just like to say a couple of things, I guess. Just even coming tonight, the stress of the whole preliminary budget process is brought back, and I found myself, you know, coming with my stomach in knots. And I, I am grateful to the voters who elected me to give me this opportunity to learn, and I've really learned a lot from this whole budgeting process. And on the secondary side of things, I really, especially, a lot of this, you do have to have faith in the administrators that are providing this information. And I know throughout the whole process that we went through this spring, that it may not appear as if I do have faith. And I was very grateful and appreciative that we had Cheryl Wilson in preparing this with her experience, coming directly out of the high schools. It is and was and continues to be an extremely difficult seat to sit in. And so my comments have to do, will apply as well to the secondary. I don't know how to vote in this situation because I would have to say on the secondary side, one of the highlights of the process actually was when we finally did get to Sentinel and Big Sky and had some sit-down dialogue with teachers. And I remember that really well. And I also just remember, you know, quite a sense of, of chaos, of trying to absorb a tremendous amount of technical information, you know, put before us in a very short timeframe. And so I guess it's hard for me to once again approve this, although I really do feel much more faith in the recommendations on the secondary level. I, I feel pretty confident in this with, of course, you know, as I expressed back in the spring, my big concern being the large beverage contract and not knowing what that's going to look like and having real concerns about, especially the nutrition and the obesity problem and the dental problems that, that that might affect. So the real problem for me, if I, if I do vote against this proposal, is simply, I do think we can-